I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name's Jimmy Davis and the mayor could not make it today. I'm filling in for him. And I would like to thank everyone for attending. It's always a pleasure to look out and see people in the audience. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Cepio to do the invocation.
Yes, pray. O God, to whom all hearts are open, all desires are known and no secrets are hidden. Father, we come to you with thanksgiving in our hearts, thanking you for the many blessings in which you have bestowed upon each and every one of us. You've given us life, health, and strength. Now, as we come here this hour, let us truly lean to you to make the right decisions for this city. May we be used as vessels for your will, because you don't will any ill on your children. Father, I thank you for all that's assembled here. Bless each one individually and bless us collectively as we come together this hour. We thank you, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to have everyone stand on the Pledge of Eucharist.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have comments from citizens. Ms. Donna Mansell is the first. And I'd like to remind everyone, we do limit it to five minutes.
Hey, it's Donna Mansell, and I just wanted to show you what I'll be speaking about for like two minutes. Hold it. I'm visual myself. I want to share with everybody. I have to see if I can get the light, if possible. 217 Wilford Street runs up, and that's the bottom on South Church Street. So the first page, as you can see, the time was Saturday at 10:56 when I was going up the road, you can see my lights. So then when I turn my lights out, that's how it looked without lights, the black page. So we need a light at the top of the hill somewhere. It's just real dark in that area, and we do ride and we do, you know, go through the neighborhood, but I just would like some kind of light, if possible. I don't know who I need to speak to. I just wanted to show you what it looks like without the light. Then also, Wesley Street, coming down the hill, Wesley, turning on South Church Street right there, trying to see about the road. I have two drivers, young men, that stay with me and are driving now, but the road, one minute they're on the left side, one minute they're on the right side of the road. I don't know if the road needs to be smoothed out or whatever, just trying to teach them the right way to drive. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wasn't it a light on that top of the hill at one time?
One time, it was, yeah.
It's still a poster, right?
It's still a poster. And it looked a little better in color. Pass it.
Next speaker, Ms. Pam Winters.
Hi, I'm Pam Winters, and I'm going to be brief tonight, but I was reading the land development regulations that were adopted November 6, 2006, and Article 1, Section 1.2 states to assure wise and timely development of areas in harmony with the comprehensive land use plan. So that got me looking further, asking what was the comprehensive land use plan, and I got a copy of the City of Pickens Comprehensive Plan dated June 4, 2012, and found a land use element in it on page 95. And it says a lot of stuff, but I just want to put, just point out one. Residents have expressed a desire to see the community grow in a controlled way that will not diminish the quality of life and sense of community. So I did more research, and it's kind of my attention that some, if not all, of the council members weren't even aware of this comprehensive plan. I'm not sure if the Planning Commission is aware of it or is using it with their planning or decisions, but I just ask, why would council, how could they even consider annexing or approving a development of this size without a comprehensive plan? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
That's everyone that we had signed up to speak tonight. Thank you all for coming up and speaking, and we can now move on to departmental reports and committee of the whole. First is the administration, Administrative Finance, Planning, Co. Work, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Davis. Just a couple of things to present and review with council tonight. Mandy and I have both been in touch with David Phillips of Green Finney, and I forwarded all of you this afternoon. David just sent to Mandy the engagement letter. This will allow us to move forward with getting our audit done. We'll get that started middle of next month is when David feels we can start that. So that's something that we discussed earlier this month, and that's something that is underway. Additionally, we have, Mandy's been in touch with our bond council, and he is working on amending the Series 2021 Revenue Bond and allow us to use bond proceeds to purchase equipment. And this is how we can fund the new backhoe that was purchased for our Utilities and Public Works Department. The goal is for City Roads, our bond council, to have some language up here before the October 9 meeting so that y'all can consider it on first reading on October 9 and on final reading on October 23. We do have a Planning Commission meeting scheduled for October 10. They do have on their agenda and will consider adopting an R-20 zoning classification. This will provide for lots almost a half an acre size. This is something that has also been previously discussed this month, and that is on the Planning Commission's agenda for their October 10 meeting. I know that many of you have wanted to have another public meeting following that prior to bringing this back up for your consideration. So once we have the Planning Commission Act on the 10th, I'll work to get it with your schedules, and we'll coordinate a public meeting on that annexation that Ms. Winters just brought up and mentioned, and there was a lot of interest in the other week. All of our department heads have been issued and trained on our credit card use policy and have signed off on that credit card holder agreement, so that's in place. Also, every one of our employees has now signed off on the employee handbook that they have received and understand a copy of it, so that is in place as well. I wanted to mention, I had a conversation with Ken Roper, and he indicated that the county is going to consider, for the first time in a couple of years, including some municipal roads in their road project list. The deadline's passed. He's willing to take one or two roads from the City of Pickens. He says there's no guarantee, but he'll try to get that all for us. I asked our Public Works folks to come up with some recommendations for council. They came up with Wilford Street and Queen's Court, but if y'all want to give me direction tonight, if those roads are okay, if you have other roads, let me know later tonight. Email me. I would like to get back with Mr. Roper before the end of this week to kind of give him our list since we did miss the deadline. But again, Ken said he would work to consider that. Additionally, Ken mentioned a community assistance project that Pickens County has in place to serve different areas throughout the Pickens County, and he feels like J.C. Park may be a good candidate to receive some support from this community assistance project that the county has. Jonathan's done a fine job of prioritizing some of the work that needs to take place at J.C. Park. He's come up with a list of things necessary so we can open the park, and then he's also put, these are things that would be really good to have, and then the ultimate goal would be to have these things. So Jonathan, thanks for that very comprehensive list, and just wanted y'all to have that. I'll keep you posted on what we hear from the county. I just got this to Ken last week, and I'll let you know what kind of feedback we get from Pickens County if we can get support from them on J.C. Park. One of the issues that was brought to my attention, we issued a flyer that you have a copy of in your agenda packet that said, just to reach out to the city if you are disabled or if you would like assistance, and that has resulted in a lot of requests for our Public Works folks to go to the homes, bring the cans down to the road. We absolutely want to continue to help those that have a need, but what you have is language just to present for information tonight that would require a doctor's note in order for us to do that. I think this would, again, hopefully ease up some of the work on our Public Works folks, but also provide for us to provide that support to those that truly have a need for it. One, two other things on Public Works I wanted to mention, there's a couple of our positions that is probably going to make us operate better if we can reclassify a couple of positions. I'm still working with our Public Works folks and others to learn more about it. I want to make a recommendation to you for the meeting that's going to take place in a couple of weeks. I just wanted to mention that to you, and I also wanted to mention that I've been out there a couple of times, and I appreciate Francisco Mendoza getting a list of equipment that is old, unusable, things that we don't use, and he recommends, let's sell it and see if we can get a little bit of money for that. They're in pretty good shape overall down there. This past year has been a pretty good one for the Public Works folks, but the one thing that they really would like to have is a backup brush truck, and I understand that there's been some issues with that service on occasion. So what I would like to hopefully bring to you for consideration in a couple of weeks is a list of that equipment to authorize to sell. We'll see what kind of proceeds we can bring in and see if there's any way we might be able to get a brush truck, a backup brush truck there. Again, that's just something that I wanted to mention and get your input on as we move A couple of other things quickly. We've had a couple of date changes, and all of y'all have been very good to respond to. November 3 is going to be the day of the ribbon cutting for the ADA equipment that's going to be installed here within a couple, within a week or so, I think, out at Doodle Trail. So Jonathan is going to keep us posted once they get a time lined up for that, but thank you all for your reply and allow us to change that date to November 3 on that. The final thing that I wanted to ask all of you to consider tonight is, I've heard from, I think, the majority of you, but I sent an email last week. This was something that we're, I just kind of catch up from some of the things that have happened over the past month. Kayla has been great to go back in some emails that I need to see to make sure we're staying on top of, and she sent me the one that I forwarded you last week on WC Fiber LLC. This is a company that has applied to the Secretary of State's office for a franchise certificate authorization, and anytime the Secretary of State's office gets this request, they want input from the counties and the cities where they're going to be. So they want to know if we can, if we're going to approve it, and I think we should. It's just going to be another option for our citizens and some additional revenue coming into the city with an additional franchise in place. I recommended 5% franchise fee because that's consistent with the other franchise agreements that we have in place with some other utilities. So y'all let me know if there's any questions. I'll do my best to answer them. If not, we'll go ahead and get that form back to the Secretary of State's office. But again, if you have any questions, ask me now, or I'm happy to meet with you tomorrow. Okay? And Mr. Mayor Proton, that's all I have. Again, I'll answer any questions if there are any. Yes, sir.
I've got a question about the triskins for handicapped people.
Yes, sir.
Would, I'd like for you to consider maybe just people that are handicapped that have the placard from the department.
Okay.
They have to go through a doctor to get that, if that would be acceptable rather than them going back to the doctor.
And yes, sir, that would be a question for council. If y'all feel like that would work, we could just get them to somehow document that they have a placard. We can get documentation of that. That will save them from having to get a doctor's note if that's the way y'all want to go. Yes, sir.
Sounds good.
Same here.
Saving one trip to go in somewhere else.
I should be a doctor for business.
Yeah.
Okay. We do that. Okay. Any other questions? Next will be Chief with the Police Department.
Councilman, Mayor Proton, y'all have my report, a lot of numbers and statistics. I think you'll see that we're very busy. One thing that is not contained in that report that has happened in the last about month and a half, two months, is a big transition with dispatch. And when I first got here, I didn't understand that. That was a lot of discussion about how people call 911 and it's transferred to Liberty. And we have been heretofore in a fiduciary relationship and MOU with the Liberty Police Department. We were not involved in it, but the Liberty Police Department approached the county, and now our dispatch services are with the county. We don't have any MOU or financial agreement with them, and our finance director attended one of the meetings with me at the county with emergency management personnel. We still don't know how it's all going to work. It's very similar, but it's, I wish we'd have been a bit more involved in it, but if people ask what's going on with dispatch, so you know, previously there were Liberty Police Department employees, now there are county employees that are located in the admin building in a dispatch center. I believe there's some long-range goals and been a lot of dialogue between the Sheriff's Office and E-911, but there's a change. Been a few little hiccups so far, but the one real positive thing is at least now all phone calls and all radio traffic is now recorded, and we did not have that. So no matter what happens, we've upped the game quite a little bit, so that is a great thing for us. The other thing that is really not contained in there, and I sent our administrative report that, especially going through with the finance director, and we're constantly trying to curb and curtail overtime. This is a positive, but as I went through just over the next two months, we are event-driven right now, and that's a very positive thing for the city. This past Friday, high school football game. Today, we waited tables at Heidi's Hot Dogs. Saturday, Ride to the Rock, the Jeep explosion, and the exact same time, a championship cross country meet at the high school. This just takes a lot of resources. October 6, Friday Night Football. October 9, we have homeschool group coming in. Tomorrow, we've got Cub Scouts on October the 9th, a homeschool group coming in for a talk. We get back to Friday Night Football. Appalachian Folks Festival, Be Well Honeys have their grand opening. October the 21st, 5K at the Doodle Trail. October 21st, movie night with the Pickens Youth Board. October 31st, back up on Main Street, trick or treating. In the midst of all of this, it's constant flood of JV football games, as well as a very vibrant high school volleyball activities that take place. November 9 is our third annual K-9 One Mile Run on Main Street. November 11, Hawk Motorsports shuts down Main Street for a big cruise in that day. Trial Calendar, the Christmas Parade. So inasmuch as you see that there's, like, wow, this is, we have some overtime incurred, there's a lot of vibrancy in it. I don't know how to really measure that in terms of what that means, you know, to the city. You could look at an ledger and say, wow, there's money going out, but these events bring a lot in. But we're very, very busy, and it just takes the entire department to do all that. The other thing that is in the report, and I just wanted to get this information out there, this affects, I live here in the city. This is my home, and I want my property values to remain high, so there is a selfish endeavor in this, I suppose. But there's about a three-acre piece of property in this city that taxes us all the time, and it says, we were coming in, 404 Hampton Avenue, there was a call going out, which is Avalonia. This is a safe city. It's very safe. It's a beautiful city. But our crime statistics, that used to refer to as the Uniform Crime Report, which is now, we refer to it as NIBRs, there would be an appearance that crime in Pickens is pretty strong, that it's not a safe place. And just in 2023, at 404 Hampton Avenue, we've had 37 escapes from a Level 4 PRTF, and that is a psychiatric rehabilitation treatment facility for juveniles. 37 escapes. When they leave the property by climbing a 20-foot fence or bashing open a door or kicking out a window and run through the streets of the city of Pickens, that company, they refer to these escapes as elopements. I'm not familiar with any patrol that's going on when this happens, but that's what they refer to them as. But these are escapes from the facility. 37 so far in 2023. 13 assaults, five sexual assaults. 2022, we had six escapes, six assaults, one sexual assault. So when you lay these out at the feet of the Uniform Crime Report, or NIBRs as it's referred to now, our numbers are high, that it looks as if, I would question, what is your police department doing? Why is crime, it is about a two-acre tract of land at 404 Hampton Avenue, and there are dedicated people there that love those young people, and they need help. The city of Georgetown, South Carolina this past year, this newspaper article, Broadstep no longer operating in Georgetown after deciding not, they basically, city council declared the place a public nuisance and dealt with the business license. I just wanted to have some discussion about that. If you look at our crime statistics, these assaults that impact our crime reporting are driven by one place. 37 escapes. What this also boils down to, and we talk about speeders and where to be and this and that, with 37 escapes, and we broke down the hours we spend on every report this past year up there, and my hours are 100, this past year, 144 hours, or right at about 150. When you break that down into a 40-hour work week, we have spent four solid weeks on one tract of land, 404 Hampton Avenue. That's a lot of business for the Pickens Police Department. And when these, we have had two officers assaulted in malaise when recovering these people. We've had a taser incident, a couple of them. We've had to transport some to Columbia, which then incurred DJJ expenses of $55 a day. I'm not sure what the solution is. I'm trying to work with Broadstep, which took them over two years ago, to try to come to some better understanding and demand some leadership up there. In the last few days, it's gotten better, but that's a lot, and I wanted the city council to know that that's why our numbers are driven. It's not on Roseman Street or on Queen's Court or on East Cedar Rock, just a little parking lot right there, and the pictures are in there. I think, I don't even know if a lot of people in this city know what that is, and there's very few Level 4 PRTFs in this state, and these young people need that help, and there's some good, there's some good people there and some good therapists and counselors, and we know a lot of these kids, we want them to get help. This is informational, so you know what that place is and what we're dealing with and sort of the danger that goes with that, as well as the real impact in terms of property values. When people look at Pickens, I'm going to move there, and they look at the UCR and go, wow, that is not a safe place per capita, and it is a safe place. It's a great city. I just wanted to put that out there informationally. We thank y'all for letting us work. We're looking forward to all these events and Cub Scouts coming and homeschool groups and all the things that we do, and we'll keep being out there for you all the time.
Thank you. Chief.
Yes, sir.
I also want to congratulate you on your award with ATF.
Oh, thank you.
Prestigious award. That's a high award there, and they couldn't pick a better man. Appreciate you doing your job. Appreciate the job that you do here, and the men and women that work for you here, the job that they do.
And you caused me to correct myself. The administrator, there's a few little thank you notes in there, and one was very particular to thank you from other law enforcement offices. As you know, Mayor Proton, we can be pretty critical of one another. We come together when we need to, but law enforcement can be pretty critical. But for a deputy to take some time to send that kind of email about Caleb Castle, that was one fine police officer, and he's got a great K-9, and he comes out when he is needed. Please take a look at that. That's a very well-written, took a moment of time on somebody to say thank you for that. So that made me think of that, but thank you for acknowledging that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Fire Department's next, Chief.
Thank you, sir. I'll be brief tonight. Just to kind of echo what Chief Beach said, events are driving us this time of year, a lot of demand, so we are able to address them much better with the additional personnel that we've gotten. So I'm pleased to report that we've hired two of the three full-time positions. Sorry, Dustin Alexander and Tyler Whitcomb have joined us over the past month full-time. So for the first time since 1975, we've got more people in the firehouse. Huge accomplishment. The third position is actually being filled part-time right now, so you have a much higher level of fire protection. We have run into some small problems with getting all the things we need, like lockers. I ordered them back in July, and they're not supposed to ship until October, so just typical thing. So we're making do, got a few more pieces of furniture we'll be looking at procuring over the next month or so to make this transition complete. So pleased to report that at night, you have two full-time firefighters on duty during the day. We have three to four, kind of dependent on the day of the week, so much better than we've been in the past. Chief Beach, I wanted to address, he brought it to my attention again tonight, and I've heard it from a couple of people. You did not buy a piece of junk ladder truck. It's not constantly broke down. When you see it set up out in the side yard, that is us working with it. That is us learning it. That's us doing preventative maintenance. All the other trucks, we can do inside the bay, but something about raising a ladder inside the bay just does not usually work very well. So I can assure you, that truck has not been out of service. When I heard it, I had just as many questions as anyone else. So it has not been out of service, other than we've done preventative maintenance. We've changed belts. We've done stuff like that that you would expect us to do to take care of the fleet you provided for us. We did have a rather large expense with brakes on Engine 1. That's a 1987 Pierce. We had to spend about $5,000 on brakes last month to get it back up where it needed to be. The mechanic felt like it was the original drums still on the truck, so if they lasted until 1987, I can assure you that this next set's going to last well past the life of that truck. But everything's going great. Our call volume is exponentially higher than it was last year, so those numbers at the end of the year, we're going to be several, you know, I like numbers, so we're going to be probably 20, 25% over where we were last year for our call volume. But other than that, things in the fire department are great. You got a great fleet. We got a great group of guys. We can get everything we've got ordered. We can get that in, and we'll be doing great. Any questions, I can answer for you.
Sounds good.
Chief, I'd like to thank you and your full-time personnel, as well as your volunteers. Y'all doing an awesome job.
All right, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chris.
Recreation.
Thanks, sir. I will, they've set the standard now, so I'll try to be brief as well. You can see in the papers in front of you about the recreation. We've got football cheer, volleyball, and soccer going on currently. With between those sports, we've got 295 kids in volleyball and soccer and 138 with football and cheer, and you can see the breakdown on the teams and that. In addition to the games and practices every day of the week, except Wednesdays and Fridays and Sundays, we do our daily projects, working in the fields and working in the buildings inside of our facilities. The press box at the Bruce Field has had to have some work recently. The AC unit in there was no good, and the outlet that it was plugged into was miswired, so we had to do a little work in there and replace some AC work. And the window on the side with some bullet holes in it had to be replaced as well. So if you ride by there, you'll see some new glass and some new window units in there. From the road, it looks much better than it did with the bullet holes in it. Some of our different events coming up, as well as the city events, we're bringing in a new program for the rec center during the day in the mornings. It'll be a pickleball-based program, working with the PYAC to be able to provide that to the public during some hours during the week for folks to come in. We are also working with Proof, or actually, that we are, we already have worked with Proof, to be able to provide football helmets to all of our football athletes this year. So Proof did fundraising and different events throughout the past year, concessions and whatnot, raised enough money. They were able to purchase enough football helmets to give every football player that we have a helmet. So they match, they look sharp and brand new, they match uniforms. Couple of kids that didn't want it, they want to wear family helmets. Couple of kids that didn't want it, they wanted to wear family helmets or helmets they had already purchased, but every student or every athlete was presented with the opportunity for a helmet. So I wanted to thank Proof and PYAC for both of those, those programs and donations. As far as the facility side, I'm sure you've seen Thomas and me and Josh out there working on the fields and mowing and weeding. Thomas has got the turf tank out working in the fields, painting, so if you ride by one of our fields, you'll see that it's, looks sharp, straight lines, so Pickens City won't be on ESPN for any tricky lines like the house was. We've got a good-looking field. I hope to have a preview day for that turf tank at the beginning of October that you'll all be invited to, be able to see how it operates and see what we're working with, with that piece of equipment that you provided for us. We're very thankful for that. Just to give you an idea, our soccer fields alone used to take an entire day for two to three people to paint. Now we can paint Bruce Field with regulation lines, numbers, tick marks, hash marks, everything, and all of our soccer fields in one day. So it cut down a significant amount of time for folks to be out there painting by hand. And then you can see on the facility side, several other projects we have working. I've been working with the city administrator to be able to get some of these projects moving forward and get these things going. He has been absolutely beyond helpful with all this, to be able to get us moving in the right direction with it. We are working with the school district on a couple of things and then with the water department as well. You'll see on the third page there, the empty, it had a water leak and we had to cap it due to time restraints and other issues because it was flooding spout there. We are working on that, getting it replaced, so the irrigation will be working up there. We've got the Doodle Trail and Doodle Park ready to go with irrigation. That way we can start using it and be able to start seeding and fertilizing that grass up there so that instead of dirt, we have a nice green patch up there beside the playground. And to speak on the ADA swing, they should be here this week to put it in. So we should have it installed by the end of the week as long as the company's here as time and on time, they said two to three days. Should be here by Wednesday and they should be done by Friday. And then November 3rd will be our date for the rip and cut on that. I appreciate all the responses and all the flexibility with that date and the, the effort being put in by the city on that. Do you have any questions for me?
I'd like to say that I've heard nothing but good things about the rec. The fields, they look awesome, probably the best they've looked in a long time. I'd like to thank you and your personnel for the, for the job that you do.
Thanks, sir. I will make a note about the fields, don't judge us on our baseball field and fields. We were having a delay getting the chemical in, we did get it in last week, and we've spent this week hitting some of our fields and dragging them, getting that grass out of theirs.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Utility.
Well, good evening. I was planning on reading this 10-page report, word for word, but I'd like to have a job tomorrow, so. But I, I'll be brief. I'd first like to thank Chief Elrod. I had to do a confined space entry at the water plant a week or so ago and his team, super helpful. I felt safe the whole time, they had to lower me in a like 25-foot pit and I had to walk back and do some inspections, so it was a little nerve-wracking, but I mean, you got just an awesome crew. They were nothing but helpful and, you know, super helpful to my guys all the time. So in our report, I hope you have a chance to browse it and look over it. Drinking Water Treatment, Bobby Abercrombie continues to lead us there and he's doing a fantastic job. Just love having him on our team. He's got a lot of knowledge and experience with the water treatment plant there and I just love working with him. He's a great guy and knows the facility well. That confined space entry, we are still having some structural issues with the sedimentation basin, so we're monitoring that weekly and we hope that it does not require any, any capital to be able to fix it, but we, we think we can do some surface level repairs that may be able to get us through until the new plant comes online. That's, that's our hope, that would be the best case scenario. I know we've had some comments from citizens on some water quality out in the system. We, we're working through those daily. I've got a list, I know Ms. Porter, she reached out to me on a citizen and I've been reaching out to that citizen and trying to make sure we take care of that. This is kind of the worst time of year for manganese to show up in the water and that's just due to the source water at City Lake. We, we treat it to the best of our ability and we're, you know, I, I was talking to the administrator earlier, I stress to my guys, we, we touch more lives in a day than any doctor in the county could because we're, we're in public health. If we, if we mess up treating the water, you know, people consume that and we take that very seriously. So we want to make sure that people are getting a safe and dependable source of drinking water. So, yeah, you can look through some of the highlights over the past year, Drinking Water. Really like to highlight the guys on distribution too, just really dedicated individuals. We built a, a great team over the past year and I'm excited for that trajectory moving forward. They spent all day Sunday on a leak in Ace's parking lot out in the Ingalls. So they were there till 2:30 in the morning last night, working hard, trying to get the water back on and so, yeah, we appreciate citizens' patience with that and we definitely want to continue to serve the citizens the best we can. So any, any questions for me as far as water, wastewater, distribution, collections? And Mr. Davis, I know you, you asked me about Liden Copper Lot and we are still working on that. I'm working on the data phases still, but I'm nearing the end of that and we're going to start getting boots on the ground with that. That deadline's October 2024 and we, we are working to have a working inventory, so that's, we're, we're plowing forward with that.
Sounds great. Thank you for everything you do.
Mayor Proton Davis and members of council, I just want to say that Mandy and I met with Drew and Steve Kingwood and Kevin Laird last week, and I appreciate you and your team, Drew, kind of helping to get me up to speed. I think Mandy and I both learned a lot about the arrangement that we have, our agreement, how things are working. Very pleased to have you all serving our citizens and there's a few things with, with public works that we're going to work on that we feel can, we can even work better as a team with, with what CWS does and what, what our good staff does. So thank you for your time and look forward to continuing to work with you during my hour period.
It's been a pleasure working with Mr. Davis, he's been steady for us, so yeah, just been great. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. At this time, we have an appointment, we have a couple of appointments for the municipal judge and the assisted judge. Ms. Melanie Davis, if you'd come forward, please. If I can get through here.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, I'm gonna hurt you.
We'll, we'll do the, the oath. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified. If you'll repeat after me.
I do solemnly swear to or affirm that I duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of the State.
According to the Constitution of the State.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge those duties.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge those duties.
And will preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of the State and the, and of the United States.
And will preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of the State and of the United States.
I pledge to uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary.
I pledge to uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary.
I pledge the discharge of my duties to treat all persons who enter the courtroom with civility, civility, fairness and respect.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties to treat all persons who enter the courtroom with civility, fairness and respect.
I pledge to listen, to listen courteously, sit impartially, act promptly and rule after careful and considerate deliberation.
I pledge to listen courteously, sit impartially, act promptly and rule after careful and considerate deliberation.
I pledge to seek justice and justice alone, so help me God.
I pledge to seek justice and justice alone, so help me God.
Thank you. I'll have to, yeah, right here. Thank you and thank you for your service. Next, we can order it. Hallwell.
My first line, I'm just kidding.
Okay, if you'll repeat after me, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of the State.
That I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of the State.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge those duties.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge those duties.
And will preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of the State and of the United States.
And will preserve, protect, defend and defend the Constitution of this State and the United States.
I pledge to uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary.
I pledge to uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties to treat all persons who enter the courtroom with civility, civility, fairness and respect.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties to treat all persons who enter the courtroom with civility, fairness and respect.
I pledge to listen, listen courteously, sit impartially, act promptly and rule after careful and considerate deliberation.
I pledge to listen courteously, sit impartially, act properly and rule after careful and considerate deliberation.
I pledge to seek justice and justice alone, so help me God.
I pledge to seek justice and justice alone, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
She didn't say you.
I thank you, I didn't say you. I'd like to get a motion also brought, to go ahead and appoint Melanie Davis and Margaret Hallwell as the municipal judge and the assisted judge.
I'd like to make say a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mississippio and second by Lois. All in favor? Raise your hand. The, the unanimous? And we're going to do a discussion of the following, relocating the council meetings and I guess I'll need to ask for a motion first to bring this back from the table for discussion.
I'd like to make a motion, we move our meetings down to the senior sitting.
And I need a second.
Set, I should bring it off the table for discussion.
Is there any second? We have a motion to bring it back off of the table, however, we have no second to do that at this time, so I guess that remains table. Okay, number seven, no, made a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion with adjourn.
I see.
Motion to adjourn by Lois, second, Mississippio. All in favor, raise your hand.
Right hand, sorry.
Again, thank you all for coming and we'll check on that line.